I'll call the July 14th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council to order. If you wouldn't mind bowing with me and then we'll do our prayer and our pledge. Father, I thank you for this chance that we get to come together. Lord, for the blessings that you've given us, for the time that you've given us. Lord, I thank you for the many things that have happened in this community over the last many weeks, for July 4th and the opportunity that we got to celebrate our country, the freedoms that we have and the freedoms that people have fought to give us. I ask that you help us make decisions that are fitting to you, the decisions that would be fitting for our city. Give us guidance, give us wisdom, and give us humility. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on our agenda is options for mitigating future healthcare insurance costs.
I'll jump in here real quick. This list is an action item. There's no action.
Okay.
Discuss.
This is not an action item. This is more of a report item. Okay?
When we, when we, you guys, come on, come on. I'll let you introduce everything, Pam. When we do budget every year, part of what we do is to look at our healthcare options, and we have excellent advisors, who Pam will introduce here real quick. This year, we talked about some of the options going forward in the future, and healthcare costs are always increasing, so we want to be on top of that and look for things. These gentlemen brought up some great ideas, and so we thought this would be a good time to share with council. Since we're not in the middle of deciding, we're not deciding anything, this is kind of put in mind for the future as we go forward with the budget, some things that we do to mitigate some costs. Pam, would you introduce the guys?
This is Dave and, oh, where's, oh, and there's Alden. And they're with Mercer. They are our benefit consultants, and so they have been working with us over the last year or so on our benefits. And so they've given us an overview of where we are in terms of the market and some options that we might, you know, want to think about in the future to mitigate some of the cost.
Thank you, Pam. So, we will keep this to 25 or so minutes. We will make it quick, I promise. What we wanted to do today is talk about some things that have been discussed for several years now.
No, that's right.
Sorry, the mayor's busy.
So, things that some of you have heard for several years, we wanted to actually bring ideas and show actual financial results of how your plan might look. Because a lot of times we talk in very, we don't want to do that today. But we're going to say maybe four things that we think, three or four things we think y'all might be able to do in the next year or two that could help mitigate some of these increases. So, let's start for a second. Seventeen point eight million dollars. That is roughly what you're going to spend in 2021. So, calendar year 2021 on medical and pharmacy plans, okay? Seventeen point eight million. We'll say eight changes for easy math, and when I say percentages, think of each point being, what, $180,000? So, it's a lot of money. So, if you can save a percent, $180,000. Save two, three, four. A lot of times we say percentages and people don't equate that to dollars, but we're talking real dollars. Seventeen point eight million dollars for 2021. For 2022, we think that could go up. The budgets really are already kind of set, but if we're really looking at claims through May, I mean, we can project up to an eight or nine percent increase. Why? Two and two and a half percent, that's COVID related. I'm personally kind of getting tired of the COVID excuse for everything, but there is some legitimacy in claims, right? That did happen. And we do think that there's probably going to be some more claims left this year. So, luckily for the vaccines, they were funded by federal government, so that that's really not in this claim data. Those were, if you didn't got a shot of Walgreens, it would have been maybe $50 for not a big plan spend. But we do think there are probably going to be some COVID related claims left this year, and there were two in the last twelve months. Another thing you guys need to think, you guys are not different than anybody else, is pharmacy spend is going up and up and up and up. We're going to talk about that. Alden's going to give some overview on what, everything has one slide, and we'll talk about pharmacy. Specialty pharmacy especially, and then consumerism. So, everybody has heard the word consumerism. Everybody has heard what that means over the last 10 years. I've been in a consumerism plan, and I am, I'm just going to use that word to make it simple, like consumerism plan, a high deductible health plan with an HSA for 10 years. It's good some days, and it's really bad other days. Don't puff on what that means. So, roughly eighty million dollars. If you look on the right, you're going to see plan design and employee contributions. Basically, when we benchmark you guys, y'all are originally, y'all have very good benefits. Cost to employees is solid. Plan designs are solid. And in reality, Pam, we haven't changed much in four or five years? I mean, we've been going on four or five years of believing everything pretty stable. So, as other, not only municipalities, but companies have increased benefits and changed their deductibles, changed their claim data, y'all pretty much stayed the same, which has now created a situation where you have to do a difference. Not a bad thing. It's just true. So, one of the things we want to talk about today is, we call them high performing networks, but some people refer to this narrow network. What does this mean? For many, many, many years, you guys have offered Blue Cross Blue Shield now of Tennessee, and you offer the P Network. The P Network is the biggest network, Blue Cross offers. You put any doctor in hospital, anywhere, and if they take Blue Cross, they're a mess. Pay goes in, they swipe their card, you get a discount. That's how the plan is made. Blue Cross about, can you recall, Pam, if that was, let's say a decade ago, they came up with what they're going to call their S Network. Extra slack. It's their quote unquote narrow network. Every carrier now has a narrow network. Now, what does that mean? It basically means they take a hospital or two and say, you can't go here because that's our higher cost facilities. They're going to steer you into lower cost facilities. Be as plain as possible for you guys. Blue Cross Blue Shield, S Network, you cannot go into HCA facilities, which would be so crazy. Okay? For a municipality, I understand sometimes that's a heartache or a swallow. It just is. But I will say, I'm also the consultant for Rutherford County, effective 1122, they have Cigna instead of Blue Cross. They just put in a narrow network, effective 1122, and their employees cannot go to HCA facilities. All right? What does that mean? For everybody that enrolls in that narrow network plan, it's an option. You don't have to choose it. If you choose it, it would be eight percent claim savings. So, what Blue Cross says is our contracts with HCA are eight percent worse than if you go to Stump, or St. Thomas, or you, I mean, ironically, not even if you go to Vanderbilt. Again, something to think about. I have always been a Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee member for all the companies I work with. Whenever I had the choice of the S or P Network, I always chose the S because less money came out of my paycheck. The company saved money, I saved money out of my paycheck, and all I knew, I live in Norwensville. All I knew is instead of turning left and going down Blue Cross, the St. Press, I just turned right and went down Blue Cross to Williamsburg. It was simple for me. You live in, you know, Smyrna, Antioch, which is Southern Hills. If you have doctors that are part of St. Anthony, it's a lot bigger decision. But what we want to point out today is you don't have to force anybody into this. You just offer, and you would offer the same plans, and then you give them a choice. You want to be in the P Network and pay, you can have the number, pay a hundred dollars on your paycheck, or you want to be in the S Network and pay seventy dollars a paycheck, whatever that difference needs to be to make it in there, okay? That is an option that Blue Cross, we talked to you before, says, basically, you can do any year you want to do with relatively low risk. And if 50% of the people enroll in it, it's 30%. For every person that enrolls, we're saving eight percent. So, that number ends up being pretty big for communication. You know, positive. Thirty questions on that. Does that, does that concept make sense to everybody? And I will say, Alden, do you have any companies that don't offer both networks right now? I mean, every single company that I know of is pretty much, no matter what carrier we have, usually offer some sort of a small network because of the claim savings.
Can I ask a question just for clarity?
You can.
You're talking about companies have either both P and S?
Correct.
Or at least, or, or just S, but, I mean, what we're probably talking about here is both P and S and offering some savings to not only us but to the employees, right?
The fact about it is savings for who goes in and elects that S, right? You're not forcing everyone in where I'm saying, we're not going to cut all those hospitals out, but it's anyone we can get in there, you know, you're going to see six, seven, eight, nine percent of times of savings for each of them.
So, then the best way to think about it is, again, what Rutherford County's doing, they went from having basically two plans, so they had, let's say, an HRA and a PPO plan with their P, and now they have four. They have HRA, PPO with P, HRA, PPO with S. Same plan as I said, deductible, same co-pay, same everything. You just can't go to a certain facility. It, it is a simple concept. I don't want to make it seem like, yes, somebody inevitably is going to enroll in that S network, and then inevitably, they're going to forget that their doctor is part of the HCA, and inevitably, you're going to get a phone call. Three years down the road, you have those, you don't have those, the first year, every year. I don't want to make it sound easy, but for eight percent savings, we're at the point in time when we're spending eighteen million dollars a year that you got to start planning adults for adults, and if you communicate it well, you know, you're likely.
I like it. No, I love it.
At some point in time, you have to give them the communication, and they have to make the decision. And what's happened is, it does create, so in theory, what would happen is you would have an HRA with a S network that would be your lowest cost plan, and that might be cheaper than any plan anybody has today, and people generally respond pretty well to that. Any other questions on that? So, that, that's a narrow network strategy that, again, everybody that enrolled in it could save a lovely eight percent. Pharmacy is another huge one.
Yep. So, a couple more minutes here, guys, and we'll get out of the way if you have more questions you have. So, if you recall, so not the last slide, but the slide before that, we kind of talked about some of your numbers and everything, eighteen million that we referenced, the specialty pharmacy that was on there, and one of those numbers was 35%, okay? So, of that eighteen million dollars, you know, 35%, I'm not a statistician, but it's around four million dollars-ish, is just your pharmacy spend, okay? So, I know that probably doesn't mean much. Stacking up with other companies, other government entities similar sizes, when we look at a benchmarking standpoint, it's going to be around 20 to 22%, okay? So, what does that mean? It's significantly higher, right? There's a lot of specialty spend on your plan today, okay? So, nothing new. Pam, I've seen that for years now, I think, you know, I mean, probably go back to seven, eight years now, and it's been a continuing trend, just like we've seen, as Craig mentioned when we started. One of the things that we started to look at was the pharmacy pipeline, and then with Lissa, Pauline, and Vision, who is your pharmacy vendor, we started looking at programs to address this head on. So, one of the things that we do every year with Pam and her team, we have what we call clinical review, where we essentially have, you know, your main department step in and say, here's your cost, and then we dig down further to say, here's what's driving your costs, okay? So, then we took an analytical approach to say, what can we do to hit that cost head on from a program standpoint? How could we, you know, put ourselves in a better position four, five, six years down the road, okay? And so you'll see those on the bottom right of the screen up here, two different programs that we mentioned, that we kind of discussed with them, you know, that we'll mention. So, you know, the pipeline, as we mentioned, you know, there are drugs, you don't have to go off on a tangent here, but there are biological drugs now that cost a million dollars paid just for a pharmacy drug. If we look back 20 years ago, you know, pharmacy costs were not as expensive as they were by knee replacements, back surgery wasn't as expensive either. Things are trending up. Pharmacy is trending almost twice the rate of medicine, there is a parent on the plan now. Cancer drugs, neurological drugs, you can see autoimmune diseases that are becoming more prevalent in the U.S. today. These are all contributing factors that are driving to the increased cost. So, of the pharmacy plan, like I mentioned, of that 35%, the largest driver is specialty spend, okay? So, keep in mind, we have brand, you have generic, okay? So, you have, you have, you know, your 800-milligram hydroprofen, and you have infusion for an end-stage renal disease, okay? Which one do you think is going to be more costly, right? That's a rhetorical question, obviously, okay? So, we have generic, we have specialty. Specialty is what eats up that spend, right? You're not going to have people, you know, on a generic drug spending 35% of the plan, it's going to be a specialist. So, knowing that, we kind of looked at that and said, what can we do? What type of programs are potentially able to put in place to attack those specialty programs? So, one of them was called a managed copay, copated program. Not to go off, you know, on our, you know, on what this program is, like we had several meetings about these guys getting tested, I'm sure they slept very good that night, how bored they were in those meetings, but, you know, we, we essentially looked at, how can we manage copays for very, very expensive drugs, right? What direct coupons slash discounts could we get from the manufacturers who are actually making and distributing these types of drugs? And also, once someone is diagnosed and needs a specialty medication, how can we better wrap our arms around that individual from the start and not wait a year to find that, hey, we've spent how many thousand dollars and we've done nothing about it to this point, okay? So, in a nutshell, every thousand foot view, that is the managed pharmacy program. And so, one of the things that we look at is cost versus impact, right? So, one thing that we definitely know is the more money you save typically means the more impact you have. Now, in, in, in our world, mine and Jake's world, impact means somebody is upset. So, like Jake said, Pam is going to get in and ask phone calls, you know, that's something we want to avoid, right? And in all seriousness, we don't want a member who is on a medication to have any type of disruption, right? Care is the number one most important thing, okay? And so, when we look at this program, we, we came to the conclusion that you can see 11% of your population impacted versus a, you know, $250,000 potential savings, okay? That's a program that we think has a lot of viability. When we say impact on the 11%, there's no direct, it's, it's more of an administrative internal plan impact. Employees are not really aware of the change because it's a direct savings to the city's plan from these manufacturers versus the employees kind of having a point of sale. The last one that we'll wrap up here is the non-essential drug program. So, one thing that we have are, are drugs that you guys are going to spend money on that are considered non-essential, meaning there's no drug that treats the same thing that has better results. A lot of what we see nowadays are doctors, I know everybody trusts their doctor, but a lot of what we see is doctors prescribing certain medications that will be out of money that they receive back for prescribing those things. Or maybe someone's been on that medication for 10 or 15 years, everything's been going well, and they just haven't changed anything up, right? You run into these situations. Very small impact, 2.5% of members. You can see a potential change there that will save you guys in excess of $70,000, okay? So, a couple of different options that we're kind of looking at and considering down the road, a little bit of a snapshot of what we kind of have done behind the scenes with Pam and her team, and kind of, you know, analyzing the plan to put us in a good position as we go down the road. So, as our time is, is pretty much wrapped up, we have a couple of emotional lines we leave behind in the case you have been getting the sleep tonight, as we said. But any questions around those programs before we get out of the way?
One of the things that we had talked about, and Pam and I talked a couple of times, I don't remember exactly, was about where prescriptions are filled. And right now, we allow prescriptions to go anyplace, but there is a variance in cost between different pharmacies, and to limit the pharmacies, when I say limit, we're talking about, you know, lots, not, you know, the chain pharmacies, so it's not a big limitation, it's just a choice between Walgreens and CVS.
So, I didn't, I didn't, so that goes back to a part of the, that managed care, honestly, both of these programs. One of the things that we looked at was, you mentioned Walgreens, that was one of the highest places that a prescription is filled for the city's plan, okay? And when we look at the cost, it's also the most expensive place to fill a prescription as well, when you can get the same prescription from other locations, right? So, one of the things that we looked at, you know, I'm, I'm born and raised here, you know the area very well, I'm sure most of you guys do too. You know, if you go down Memorial right here, you've got Walgreens or CVS on the corner right down here in front of the McDonald's and Taco Bell, and you pass a Kroger on the way to get there, and there's Walmart across the street, right? You can get the same exact drug for 30% less than the cost, okay? So, that's kind of what Craig's mentioned there. And one of the things that we're looking, we're not looking to limit, right, because there's a plethora of options. I mean, there's nowhere in the O of Murfreesboro that you would have to drive 20 miles out of your way to go get a different medication. It's saying, hey, if you literally went across the street, you would save yourself and you save the city money, right? Which to an employee, they're not really concerned about saving the city money, which you wouldn't be, right? But we're concerned about, hey, I save a little bit too. So, it's a win-win situation, you know, and not to, again, limit anyone, it's just saying let's try to steer them in a, in a better direction for that cost.
And right about, and, and... These are your plan designs today. The city of Murfreesboro plan design today. What this is doing is it's a slow march to a, a more consumerism, better consumer type plan. What does that mean? We somehow have to get people to understand that if it is truly 30% less money to get us the same prescription filled at CVS versus Walgreens, that might be an okay option. We have to convince people somehow that going to the ER isn't worth it unless it's true emergency, and you really don't have that set up in the plan system. Rick, are you going to make a statement, are you going to hide it up or off? Is anybody going to hide it up, boy, in here at all? Do you know? I'm going to hide it up. I have zeros on these lines being, I have to eat my deductible before any insurance pays. The example I'll give and leave you with this is, seven or eight years ago, my 11-year-old daughter, she was three at the time, just jumped on the couch, she falls off the couch and hits her head on the table, comes up, blood everywhere. I'm going to hide it up. I have an $8,000 family deductible, and I have to make a three quick decisions. Are we really going to the ER? I have no copay, right? So, how much of an ER visit, if you walk in, you just walk in the door, it's probably 1,500 bucks, probably? Or is this something in urgent care to take care of? Literally, my dog barking at me, my kid screaming at me, my wife screaming at me, and I'm sitting there thinking, and I'm like, mm, not that bad. But any, any...
$8,000?
And I'm moving to life, what do I do? And I made the decision to go to the urgent care, right? Could be $8,000. She had two stitches, but what ended up being is, right, 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 I had two stitches, but I'll never forget driving to the urgent care, so we, like I said, we lived at Frank and I, we was in the center of the urgent care, and my wife made the same, and I'll never forget. She goes, if my daughter, not your daughter, if my daughter has a scar on her wedding day, I will not forget. But, two stitches, it was $278 for two stitches at an urgent care. We were in and out, you know, less than an hour, and they were... Had I had a $250 copay, I would have so gone to the ER just to not have to deal with anything else. I would pay 250, and the plan probably would have paid $2,000. That is the example I give, and it's a little bit of a extreme example, but every day, there are choices that can be made that will lower the cost. Right now, what your plans are set up, you just don't really have, no employee or member has an incentive to make a different choice. Does that make sense? Their copay is going to be the same no matter where they go.
To put me on the ball around that too, when we looked at the clinical review, like I mentioned, on your medical, can I tell, the number one reason you had people going to the emergency rooms was headache. Number two, upset stomach. Number one, number two, headache, upset stomach, you know? So, that's kind of, you know, and that's not, I'm not saying, that's not isolated issue, that's across the board, right? You wouldn't believe it, and I have stuck toes that go, it's been $1,200 because they, you know, took a ton of water or something like that. Headache and upset stomach, you know, attributed to a lot, a lot of money on the board. So, again, that's not a, you know, hey, city worker, you have a problem. That's, that's our nation across the board in, in the ship in consumerism, like Jake mentions, that we're trying to get ahead of that.
So, I'll leave you with that. So, the things we talked about today, maybe put the member a little more accountable. Narrow network, they would have to pick an hospital, not that big a deal. Pharmacy would be very low impact in general. But one day, I do want to come back and talk about, you know, what does this look like in the future, and, you know, do we have a plan that has copays? And that plan may only be $40 a paycheck. It may be very cheap. You have to make a statement, there are ways to mitigate some of this. It's not easy, but it's something we need to talk about, because I can tell you, that number at the top isn't going down without us doing something pretty soon in the next year or two, okay?
And we're at time, so questions, anything else before we get out of the way here?
Okay? Thank you, guys. Jennifer, you got some of that promotion again.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we're going to move to the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. This is community services. All right.
All right, let's get it set up here. So, they got to talk about money going out, and I get to talk about money coming in, so it's a little bit better topic, I think. So, what I'm here today for is really to provide an overview of federal funding that's coming into states and local governments through the U.S. Treasury, and that's the coronavirus state and local physical recovery funds, which is part of the American Rescue Plan. So, what we've got is a specific focus area that these funds are designed to be used for. They really are looking at COVID-19, continued COVID-19 response and mitigation, lost public sector revenue, economic stabilization, systemic public health and economic challenges. And within the context of that, they really are looking at disparate communities, low income, impact in those areas as well. The timeframe for the use of these funds is March 3rd, 2021 through 2024. However, if those funds are obligated by the end of December, we have till 2026 to spend them. Our take on these funds is 20, around a little over $24 million. We are guided by the interim final rule and what we can and cannot use these funds for. That rule is still in draft phase. It's not expected to be finalized until September. So, this is just to provide information as we know now regarding these funds. When we were looking at the different categories that the funds could be used for and kind of analyzing whether we could spend them, we really wanted to go about it in a way that took into consideration what our community needs were, what our existing strategic partnership alliances were, and how these funds could align with them, what are the departmental needs within the city, and how these funds could align with council goals and objectives. So, within the funds, there are seven major categories that they've identified that they could be spent on. Public health, which includes mitigation, behavioral health and compensation, economic impacts, communities and families, and again, this is specific in qualified census tract areas, so they do want to see an impact with low-income communities. Lost public sector revenue, premium pay, water sewer infrastructure, and broadband infrastructure. So, I just want to take you through each of these categories and talk a little bit about kind of areas that we've identified that may be potential opportunities for project funding. Mitigation, as you can see on your worksheet, it details a little bit more information, so the worksheets that you have with your agenda packet gives a little further breakdown. Under mitigation, most of those categories related to kind of the vaccine and public health response, and since we currently don't provide that, that is already done through the public health department. We just didn't feel that there were any costs that the city would incur or projects that, that we could provide in that category. Under behavioral health, we did know that through the community that there are some specific needs around crisis intervention programs, more specifically, you know, conversations with police department and other community partners. So, that could be a potential area that, that we could use some of these funds to support. Under compensation, there really, it could go into the public, the police and fire department, but we felt like that those funds had already been covered and through FEMA for past, and then moving forward, we just didn't see that there was going to be a large enough impact that there would be a need to use these funds moving forward to cover compensation for public safety. The next area is economic impact, and we felt that there would be some opportunities through public sector partnerships that might provide some assistance to workers and families. We do know that from previous conversations that there probably are some affordable housing development needs in the community that could be addressed, as well as tourism recovery. And again, I'll point you to the worksheet because it provides some additional details about how those funds can be used. There are some really stringent reporting requirements in what you... There are some really stringent reporting requirements in what you have to prove for the use of those funds, so we just have to pay attention to that. And I'm sure there'll be further guidelines coming out as the interim final rules get settled. The next area is communities and families. And again, we thought there would be some opportunities there through some strategic partnerships to help with community violence programs, small business and nonprofit, and then education disparities, primarily looking at tutoring through the city school system to assist with that. The category that we didn't feel we could utilize is the lost public sector revenue. There was a formula threshold that we had to meet. Erin did run the numbers on that, and she didn't feel like because of our tax base that this would be a category that we wouldn't apply for. Premium pay, we'd already talked about this and had been approved previously through city council conversations. So as the interim final rule gets detailed out, we are still hoping that this would, these funds would apply for those expenses.
As of right now, Erin, yesterday, as of right now, it looks like that's coming back, right? Because we, it was in, then it was out, and now we think it may be back.
Yes.
All right. So I'll, excuse me, I'll clarify on that. When we got the interim final rule, it stated it was based off of the, any reimbursement of compensation based off of 150% of the median income, which for Rutherford County is around 30,000, which would limit us up to 45,000. However, we then found further information that indicates that we would be included as part of the Nashville MSA, which increases that median income to, I think it was around 65,000, somewhere in there, 60, 65.
I think that was the cap after.
Right. And so that brings a lot more of our employees becoming eligible with their stipends to be reimbursed. So again, just like Karen said, that final rule comes out, we're expecting that in September. So once we have that, then we'll have a report on what can get reimbursed there.
And then the other category is water and sewer infrastructure. We did look at aligning projects with existing CIP identified projects. Within the water department, they had already had an existing estimate of a little over 10 million that would have to go out for debt services. We could potentially use these funds to help offset that, so those project costs wouldn't have to go that route. And then we're looking at stormwater projects that would help align with economic development and possibly park service improvements as well. So we're looking within existing projects prioritize for those, that area. And then the last area is the broadband infrastructure, and that is the second area that we decided that we didn't have any cost associated with that. They were looking specifically for a certain speed system within, within broadband, which I think we've already covered that with our existing services. And then they were looking at qualified census tract areas that they wanted to, to be a priority area. But I think within the city limits, we have all that covered with existing services, so that wouldn't be a high-impact priority need. So just to recap, these are the categories that we thought that there could be opportunities to utilize these funds with and identify which would be done through community partners and which would be internal for city services. Any questions?
What's the timeline on this?
We have a, an initial report at the end of August where they're really asking us to kind of broadly identify how we want to use the funds. It's not a solid deadline, but as, you know, we want to try to let them know as, as soon as reasonably possible. The recommendation from the state is really not to plan anything until after September when the final rules are released. So August, September.
If we want something in August?
The U.S. Treasury Department wants something in August.
If we've spent anything, then we, you know, we still, if we don't spend anything, we'll just report zero, is my understanding. And then, and then we'll, we'll submit quarterly reports after that until all of the funds have been spent.
How long till we have to spend the money?
2024. 31st, 2024.
Right.
Unless it's obligated. If it's obligated, then we have till 2026.
We, we believe, yeah.
As it stands now, the information that we've received today.
Council, if you're all okay, what Craig had recommended was not, and I think we talked about this, but not to take any of this money until there's a defined plan on what we're going to do with it. I think a lot of the municipalities and talking to some of the other mayors that everyone is very reluctant right now to go ahead and allocate these funds without a detailed plan in place. Because if, you know, if something changes with, with Congress where something passes to claw back some of this money that's been spent, that we don't want to have to, you know, spend money that we probably wouldn't have spent and then pay it back on, you know, pay it back. So there, we're going to work on a more detailed plan, but really wait until September until we get the final rules. There may be some, some rules that come out in this American Recovery Act that could be matching. It can be even more defined on what you can and can't spend it on. So we weren't, you know, the plan was just not to take any of it until that, that happens. Is everybody okay with that?
Good.
Good.
Okay. Thank y'all for your hard work on this. I know it's a moving target. Yeah. And Ronnie, I know we had all talked about that budget when we met, the, Mrs., or the stipends magically came back in now. So who knows if they'll be in in September or not now? So it's really just changing.
Clarification on that, the employees are going to receive doesn't change. It's really the funding source. So they'll be either general fund or these funds, but the employee.
Currently, we're budgeting out of general fund right now, but it may switch.
Speaking of that, just to make sure, did we end up doing, using the March 15 date rather than the January 1 date as far as eligibility for employees?
That's what Charles did, right?
Thanks.
Yes.
I think it's what your motion was.
I think maybe it's still been, being talked about in terms of January. I just.
They haven't gone out yet neither, so those are not being dispersed yet, so.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of waiting for the final rule, but I think all of our calculations.
No, I mean, we'll go ahead and probably pay it out in August is the plan on the stipends.
All of our calculations we're doing is using the number.
Yeah, the March 15 date.
Just want to make sure.
Yes, Adam.
I'd just like to clarify, provide some clarification for people so they understand what the term interim final rule means. It is, it is distinct from a proposed rule. It is a final rule. So you can, if you take action today based on the interim final rule, you're protected so long as you're acting consistent with that. The difference is, is that with a proposed rule, an agency issues the proposed rule, and then there's a public comment period, and the agency goes back, looks at those comments, and incorporates them into a final rule. With an interim final rule, there is either, either it's something that's not particularly controversial, or there is a pressing need to get guidance out there much sooner than later. And so what they do is they issue the interim final rule and then have a comment section and with the possibility to expectation that there will be some tweaks at a later point in time. But I just, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood the vocabulary that we were talking about.
We, we just said that we're waiting till September because the comptroller recommended that. They issued a memo last week and, you know, said because there is that expectation the final will be out in September, and because there has been some changes along the way. And I think the comptroller is concerned that a lot of communities will get themselves in trouble if they spend it, you know, in good faith, but still improperly according to whatever that final rule comes out as, so.
We still think, I mean, I think it's better to get the final rules before we spend this money.
I think in probably some communities that there's something imminent, a capital expense or something that needs to be addressed, but we're not in that position, so it would be prudent for us just to wait because we don't have anything imminent.
Yep. I'm number three. I think Rick was just saying before the meeting that you just wanted to keep Rover, didn't you, and not even talk about it? Just kidding. Murfreesboro Transit logo.
Can't see if it's green or blue.
I can tell it's the dog.
What about, what about we, are we at 15, are we at 15 years with?
14.
For the 15th year, we should just do a cat for the next 15 years to not.
But is it 15 years or is it 90 years? 84 or whatever. Seven years. I did my math was all messed up. That's part of the joke.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you recall from the April workshop, we'll be retiring the green dog, okay? We're going to send him out to rest. We also revised a new logo based on y'all's input, and we would like to get your input as well. We, we're trying to finalize this so we can get it over to the bus distributor. We're anticipating receiving our order sometime in October. So the quicker we can get this resolved, the better off we would be. Be happy to answer any questions, and I'm not a design artist, okay?
Is the basic bus a gray bus or?
Yes, sir.
I like it.
I like it too.
I like it a lot better, actually. I will say, he was just kidding, I didn't say anything about Rover, actually, just so. Before anybody starts writing that down. The ladies that I work with, I said something about this and showed it to them just to get their opinion on it the other day when the email came out, and they're like, oh, the Rover's going away.
And they've probably never been on the Rover.
Like the green dog.
Hey, I would like, just something to, we've talked about this, and I like the way that this is designed, you know, with the transit giving room, but something to think about. Another municipality that I was in used their solid waste trucks and their transportation or their transit trucks to be able, they were advertising the census on the back of their, their garbage trucks. So when they're riding through the neighborhoods, it has, you know, 2021 census or whatever it was at the time. But we have the opportunity on these buses that, I'm not saying that we advertise for whatever commercial organization, but if, you know, if we have zoning requests or we have whatever, not zoning request, not a zoning request. Saying that we've got an opportunity that as these are driving through town, that if we need to let people know about community events, we can, we can do that.
Okay. How long you can shoot fireworks?
Yeah.
Like what time?
Just don't bring up digital signage, Kirk. But there's a lot of opportunities.
That was what I was actually thinking, but just kidding.
Murfreesboro Transit brought to you by Pinnacle Financial Partners. I mean, you know, there's, there's. There's, there's advertising opportunities that we have on trucks that are in neighborhoods for our city, not for financial organizations, but they're in the neighborhoods every day, and there's the opportunity to be able to get our message out on things that we need to get the message out.
Bag your grass.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll look into that.
Mr. Kirk, is, is this an original representation or was it drawn from something else inside the city of Murfreesboro?
Well, it's, it's, it's the city logo.
So that city logo with those colors, exactly like that is?
I think it's close or, Kayla, do you recall?
So they, I just, I remember that, but whenever I talked to Russ about it, what they did was they took the city logo and they kind of took some artistic, yes, that's a great way.
It's pretty close.
And, and they just made it to where it could actually be a wrap, because if they just did the logo, it would just look like a magnet that you see on our, our truck.
Refrigerator magnet.
Well, one of the different, well, actually, just on the, on that, you know, on that side of the bus, the lower side, it is all kind of laid out the same. It doesn't have the clouds on it, but.
And the other thing, you probably can't see it right now, but you kind of see some lines, and that's actually taken from our maps, our road maps in Murfreesboro, so.
Oh, oh, right there above the transit?
Yeah, and the lighter blue. It's hard to see on there, but.
Putting the phone number on there? Your phone number? Question about zoning. Call Rick.
All right. Any other questions? Y'all made a motion on this or just?
As long as y'all are good, Craig, what?
Yeah, we'll move forward with that. Yep.
All right, thanks, Jim. Thank you for the process. All right, you had the May 21, 2021 dashboard. Any questions for Erin? All right, seeing none, you have a retail liquor certificate of compliance for liquor and wine outlet. Ms. Brown?
This is a part of state law for a new retail liquor store located at 2003 Southeast Broad Street. If the certificate of compliance is approved, we'll issue it and they'll take it towards ABC commissioning.
If you was motion on this, I want to bring something up just kind of quickly. I don't know if we need to talk all the way through this today, but just because it has a lot for you guys, there's, there's been a couple of zoning requests come through planning commission in the last five or six weeks, we'll call it. One is out by the interstate on Medical Center Parkway, which got kind of tabled or deferred. The other one is at the corner of Sulfur Springs and Northfield. And basically, they're, they're planned developments, but they're saying that there's going to be a liquor store as part of the development is part of their, you know, that's kind of their indication, is that's what it's going to be there. So between that and this, and I just sort of, it made me just have some general questions about what our process is for how this goes down. So I had a discussion with Roman one night after one of the meetings a few weeks ago. And just for the what it's worth column, you know, we've got a, you know, as a reminder, we've got that one and 5,000 people rule that's in place. We've also got a, you know, 300 feet from a school and maybe 500 feet from a church or something. That's about the extent of our limitations for liquor stores, I believe, something like that. And there could be other little things, but Roman brought something up. I think it was you that brought this up at the time we talked about it. Because the new census is coming out, I think it's going to create a, someone that we were talking with, you or David, or thought that there might create this opening for maybe somewhere between seven to nine new, new liquor store certi, certificates, you know, that's all of a sudden going to be available. Is that, is that?
Based on the current census data that we have, we currently have nine openings. Granted, the two that are on agenda today would reduce that to seven openings. I believe Leslie, who processes that for us in our office, has three to four applications sitting on her desk right now pending finalization on our end before we can bring it to council for approval.
I guess the point that was hitting me was, you know, it looks like we're going to get a bunch of these pretty soon. And if there's ever a time that we need to take a look at what our bigger picture process is as it relates to, you know, what, what kind of stipulations we have in place or we want to have in place. I mean, you know, I'll kind of throw this out there. And for the what it's worth column, I'm cool, you know, with whatever's in process already, continuing on. I'm not trying to pick on people who have stuff coming through the process right now, but those things have sort of indicated this in my mind. I'm cool letting those keep on going like they want to go. If they're wanting to keep on with what they're doing, that's fine. But, you know, like for my money, one of the things that came up and the one that got tabled was, it was right on the interstate. I mean, it was at the corner of Medical Center Parkway and the interstate. And some of the comments that were made were, you know, is that really the first thing we want people to see when they come off the interstate? Is the, you know, whatever like that one is in downtown Nashville that you see, you know, I mean, right there, and that's, and then you put that one, you put that right at Medical Center Parkway. All right, so everybody can have their opinion on that or whatever. My opinion is that I wouldn't want it to be the very first thing that you see when you get off the interstate. I did happen to notice that one of these is also. I did happen to notice that one of these is also would kind of fit into that category, so it's part of why I wanted to bring that up. But again, I'm not trying to pick on any individual one of these, but just to say to you guys, I mean, I'd be open to look through the process a little bit more. I'd rather do that before approving these for me personally, but we can move on at y'all's will. But there were just some things, like the interstate deal. I mean, we don't have a residential limitation, which is part of what came to my mind as it relates to the Sulfur Springs and Northfield. And again, that can keep coming through. I wouldn't want to cut that, because the planning commission has already voted to send that to us, and it's coming in two weeks. I voted against it at the planning commission, because I didn't think there should be a liquor store 100 feet from a house, and, and a restaurant, and I didn't, and a gas station that we didn't give the owner next to. So there was multiple reasons, but one of them was the fact that there's a liquor store from here to that airplane away from a couple of houses. And I just didn't think that's the appropriate place to put a liquor store. So if, I don't know how to say it, I'm not, I'm not one to just lay a motion out there and have somebody second it or whatever, and put it on y'all like that. So I'm bringing it out in this way to say, well, if y'all want to address this, and it can become, I know it can become a little more, but Roman did provide me with some of the neighboring cities, municipalities, you know, what they kind of have in place. Many of them did have a residential restriction in there. There was, you know, it was kind of a wide variety of things that different municipalities had, but we were pretty much, seemed to me like we were on the lower end of the restrictions rather than the higher end, frankly. So, you know, a lot of them had one for 7,000 or 6,000, and we're at 5,000. A lot of them have residential restrictions, and we don't, and stuff like that. Anyway, I thought out there, I'd be willing to talk about that a little bit. I prefer to do that before we did this, and then had this onslaught of those four, plus two more that we know are coming through planning already. So, if anybody wants to talk about it, we'll talk about it. If nobody wants to talk about it, we'll move on.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Is there, have we had specific incidences that are, that are bringing up this topic? Is it your personal preference? Is it what community members have said? I'm just curious, because just from my perspective, you know, if I want to go to a liquor store, I'm fine walking 100 feet to a liquor store, it wouldn't bother me. So I'm trying to figure out, is there information I don't have access to?
So Rodney lives beside the liquor store.
Sounds very convenient to me, so.
It may be convenient for you. I mean, you know, for, you know, your kid's teacher to walk out of their school, and for 100 feet, you can get it too, but we haven't, I mean, you know. It may have happened in my lifetime, but, you know, look, we have these things in place, I think for reasons, because typically, I, I have actually, when, when the Sulfur Springs thing came up, so for me personally, I had a conversation with some of the neighbors, and certainly some of the neighbors said, "Yeah, I wish there was a liquor store 100 feet away from houses." I mean, so there's that kind of thing. I also had conversations and kind of knew there used to be a liquor store in that area, the other direction down Northfield, from that same shopping center area right there. You guys probably remember it. And it, you know, it, there were, one of our friends used to own a jewelry store right next to it. And there are certainly things that go on and happen within 100 feet of liquor stores that is certainly different than if it's a bookstore.
Gotcha.
You know, and so I think there, it warrants some different scrutiny in my mind, and I'd certainly be willing to do it. And look, it's, again, maybe it has to do with what you think the vision of Murfreesboro ought to be. If you think the vision of Murfreesboro ought to be, when you get off Medical Center Parkway, that's the first thing you see, then that'd certainly be okay, if that's your opinion on it. You know, my opinion on it is, that's kind of not what I want the gateway to our city to be necessarily.
I voiced that in planning, so I was the one that said it, so.
You, you too. I was waiting to see for it.
I think it's worth having a discuss, you know, having a discussion. The only thing that concerns me, and shared this, that I want to be careful, and I say, me personally, that, you know, now that the state liquor and wine laws have changed, the majority of our, our liquor stores are small business owners. It's not like we have, or we're set up to be able to have a lot of conglomerate, you know, liquor stores. I mean, they, they've had the shift from, from where they were only selling, you know, they were the only competition selling wine. So, you know, Publix are typically located within 100 feet of neighborhoods. I mean, the Iron Gate is a great example, the Kroger, the Kroger at Garrison Cove is a good example. So, you know, I don't want to put, in my opinion, I wouldn't want to put an undue burden on a liquor store that sells wine, that we're not putting that same burden on, you know, your big box retailers that, that technically, that Costco could, I mean, it's not going to be 100 feet within homes, but it's probably a quarter of a mile across the river from homes that they're going to sell liquor, beer, and wine. So that's the part where it gets pretty complicated, now that the laws have changed, that you don't want to penalize, you know, like Veep at Georgetown Liquor, who I go in occasionally, that, yeah, I can't walk there, but I mean, that, that guy's working 15 hours a day, and, you know, you don't want to penalize those, the small business owners, and give another advantage to your big box. So that would be, I think, something we need to make sure we're not penalizing them.
I think part of this, for me, is the big picture on this, which is, because things have changed, and we still have processes in place that were in place well before any of this stuff changed, that it might be appropriate for us to kind of take a look at the whole picture, this census situation that's going to come up with. I mean, look, there's issues that are out there. Let's say if the same person, entity, family, whatever, comes in and requests all nine of the new permits, do we think that's appropriate?
I think state law won't let that happen. I think state law limits them to only two.
What about a, what about a cooperative buying, what about if, what about if different owners?
What about if different owners are going, are using their cooperative buying purchasing? You know, I mean, even though they're technically different entities, they're still buying and conglomerating the way that they purchase in order to sell it.
Having the conversation, that all these nuances need to be on the table so we can kind of think about, at least have some direction to staff, and, you know, have some...
Yeah, I agree. It's all I kind of, I mean, that's, that's where I was going with it, and I don't know all the details. I just knew that there's, there's changes that are happening, there's things that have come up that made me think, hey, maybe it's, maybe we need to relook at it, and I know it brings up some, but that's what we're here for, man, you know, that's what we're supposed to be doing, so.
I, I think it's great. You know, if Roman's already done some work on what neighboring municipalities have done, we had this discussion, it wasn't about, well, when we initially passed this four or five years ago, we had the discussion on putting, you know, we put the, we, we didn't have the population requirement years ago, I don't believe. I think we just put, we put that in. But, you know, we had this discussion on, I can't remember who I was on the council, but, you know, I remember that we had like 14 check cashing stores from, from Mercury, or from Clark Boulevard to Northfield. I mean, in that vicinity, there was like 14 check cashing stores that we had the discussion, and Smyrna put something in place, and, you know, we had that overall discussion about how to do that. So I, if we could get that started back, I think it's a great idea.
We can put it back on August workshop.
And I'll just make another comment. I can't remember if you said, I think you said schools, I don't know if you said churches or not. I mean, to me, that, in my brain, just from my perspective, that makes some sense to me. You know, there's a certain element that I think that's challenging, and we can be respectful of those things. But neighborhoods are a little tougher for me, and I think part of that is because when you talk about some of the PUDs we're doing, the mixed use stuff that we do, I think you get into, you know, downtown, I mean, how do you, how do you do that fairly? How do people get treated fairly? I think that's a harder issue, but I understand the point you're making.
Yeah, you know, like, I'm, I'm just kind of saying from my personal preference on that, I don't, you know, I just, I wouldn't like the idea of my kids running around in the streets, you know, with, you know, what comes along with some of that sometimes, especially when there's a lot of walking traffic in the area, man. I mean, you know, that's, I think it would be limiting, so.
All right, can we put that on for Craig, for y'all to start, after the August workshop?
Yeah.
Maybe get some information for us?
You bet.
Okay. We still will have to, I mean, these two that are on here, we don't have much of an option but to consider these, do we? I mean, have these people already had, I Googled?
They put in their applications. I know that the first one we're looking at is still an empty lot, and, but they were hoping to take everything to the Alcoholic Beverage Commission's meeting next week.
I mean, I guess the question legally, if we already have a, an ordinance in place, can we legally not consider these if there, if we already have an ordinance in place?
There's a 60-day shot clock. So, 60 days. So, if they're not approved or rejected within those 60 days, they're deemed approved. But I think we're still inside that shot clock. Should probably do one in the hurdle. Now, what that does logistically to the applicant is another story, but, yeah, like I said, state law gives you 60 days.
Oh, yeah. 60 days if we wait until the August meeting.
That's going to depend on what the application date was.
And I don't have that with me, but it wouldn't have been any earlier than July 1, because the moratorium was lifted July 1.
Okay. But if, how long would it take us to go through a process of creating a new ordinance? Have to go to planning, or is that just a city council?
It would be, it would be a city, so long as it's not amending the zoning ordinance, then it wouldn't have to go to planning. The distance requirements for, you know, that exist now for churches and schools are in the, the alcohol section of the city code, not in the zoning ordinance. So if you were looking at, you know, distance requirements from a residence or some other type of structure, then that wouldn't have to go to planning commission. If you're looking for something that you don't want liquor stores in this type of zone, that's going to have to go to planning commission.
I mean, look, I...
I would say that, you know, since we do have these on the table, and we have not talked about doing, making any changes, let's do the right thing and go ahead and approve these. Moving forward, we'll address everything else.
I think so, too. If they're, they've already went through the application process.
Because if I had something on the table, and Rick brought something up, I'd be pissed.
You are, you are. Yeah, I extended the meeting for at least like six, eight minutes, I mean.
Quit talking.
I hope you guys have their places to be.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Motion second.
These seem to be addressed separately, because they, you know, they're approved or disapproved on their own individual merits.
So Mr. Wade's motion is for the liquor and wine outlet certificate of compliance.
Yes.
All right, Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, that's for items five and six.
No, no.
Just five, okay. All right, so now we need to consider Royer Wine and Spirits.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, any statements to be paid?
We actually have a beer permit.
Okay.
So there's a new location for a retail vape store on 902 Memorial Boulevard. They have everything in order except for their building and codes inspections. If approved, we'll issue when building and codes finishes their inspection.
Okay. Any questions?
And vaping.
Okay. Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the beer permit.
Second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any other business? You want to do that?
Yeah.
Any statements that need to be paid?
No.
Okay. Chad, we have Eastern Aviation Fuels contract extension.
Yes, we have a three-year agreement with two one-year extensions. We're at the fifth year, the last extension, and this will carry us through till June of next year, if you consider approval of that. And we can buy some fuel for that jet that just came in. So, no pressure.
A second. Ms. Brown?
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Nice.
Good job.
Nice.
Good job.
Nice.
Mayor McFarland?
I'm giving it.
All right.
Give me this back.
People don't know if an eraser will take that. Chad, while you're up, I thought it would be appropriate if you and Craig, you know, or Craig maybe gave us a quick update on where we are at the airport. You know, we had talked about tie downs quite a bit at our, our retreat, so wanted to see if you could just give us an update.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a quick update. We, we've talked with a few of you, we've had a conversation with the FAA, the regional, I don't know what he is, he's a regional something.
Yeah, usually, it's the ADO office, so it's the regional office at Memphis.
Yeah, and concerning our, our letter that went to MTSU reallocating the tie downs, we've met also about three times now with the new dean of applied sciences, Dean Greg Van Patton, and filled him in on the situation. And we've had some, I think, productive from the standpoint of getting him up to speed, conversations about our expectations and the changes that we'd like to be out there and with MTSU's operations. We also met, when was that? We met with the new chair.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, huh, gosh, it was yesterday that we met with the new chair that's coming in. He's not in until August, 1st of August. He's coming from Iowa and relocating, but we filled him in as well. I think there's been some conversations. I know he's, he's getting up to breath, up to speed pretty quick on, on the changes that, that need to be made. We know that MTSU is actively visiting other airports right now to see what they can do as far as, as potentially relocating some of their fleet. We made it very clear to them that the time has run out for them not to do something. We need to do something substantial here pretty quickly. We've reiterated that message over and over again, and I, I, it's, the, the new dean and the new chair of the aerospace program, I think, seem to have a pretty good understanding. The chair, obviously, is an aviator, the dean is not, he's a chemistry professor, so, but, but I think he's getting up to speed pretty quick. So we'll see what they do and how much, say, they have. That's the question, is how much authority they're going to have to make the changes that need to be made here immediately, and then as we go forward to the end of the year.
The other thing that I think that was positive that came from those meetings, too, is that it sounded as though the safety officer position was back on the table, and it even sounded as though maybe a hire was to be made within a, within a week or so, it sounded like.
And Chad, on Tuesday morning, it was about 10 after 7:00, and Chad, I'll just ask you if, I know the answer, but if you're in the pattern around the airport, what are you taught above pattern altitude that you're supposed to be?
When you're, when you're flying around Murfreesboro, you're supposed to be 1,000 feet or over any, any populated area. And now this aircraft was in the pattern, per se, and of course, as they come around to land, they're, they're going to descend and get closer. In this particular time, in this particular event, the aircraft was, and I think it was the only one in the pattern at the time, so there was no real need to go that far out, but was way out off of Compton Road and, and was quite low. I think it was like 500 feet above the ground and completely low. One thing that we do have on the field right now, and it's, it's not a, it's not a great excuse, but our PAPI light is out. It's one of the, it's one of the instruments that helps guide the aircraft in and out. Regardless, a pilot is, is responsible for maintaining altitude. We are trying to get that up.
I was out in the reserve at 10 after 7:00, and I, I thought the plane, I just emailed Chad, I thought the plane was going down. I mean, it was that low. And then Chad looked and, you know, so where that comes into play with a safety officer, if you have a plane that's 500 feet, that's a mile and a half, two miles out from the runway, and you lose an engine, there's no getting back to the...
And I did receive another email from a neighbor, so you weren't the only one that Brett saw that.
So I think that's where the safety officer would come into play, that it's important as we're having this, this discussion, so. is going to email you the application, but after many, many years of service, Jennifer Garland is requested to come off of the planning commission, her travel commitments, and also she is looking to spend more time out of Murfreesboro. So a recommendation that's going to come to you is for Ms. Jamie Everwater, who is an attorney, to go on to the, to the board. This is an important, important recommendation, so what I've just asked and have done is, Mr. LaLance says, it's, it's a Supreme Court appointment for a planning commission. So they're going to email y'all the applications, and that way, if you want to reach out to Ms. Everwater to ask questions, or, you know, have a conversation with her about planning commission, then that way, it's not going to hurt my feelings when the recommendation comes to council for, you know, y'all to ask questions. So I think these planning commission appointments are very important, and that way it gives y'all, it's probably going to take two weeks because we're not going to meet, we're not meeting next week, so it would be the next week before we would consider it, and then it takes that individual another couple of weeks to be trained up before they go on to planning commission. So Mr. McKnight's going to email you the application, and that way, y'all can reach out and ask Ms. Everwater if you have any questions. Mr. LaLance?
I was just going to ask you guys whether it needs to be a motion or just a nod ahead or something. Are y'all all good with the liquor store thing, with kind of instructing them to hold off on the other ones that are, you know, before we have that same situation with a couple more, to, to hold off on those until we have a chance to talk to it, so that we're not put in the same situat, I mean, you know, I voted for them because I think fair is fair, like what Kirk really said, and I voted for them because, you know what, they're on the agenda, and rules are what they are today. But in that same light, y'all good with holding off on those other ones until we have a chance to talk about, I mean...
Do we need a formal motion saying?
There's, there's two things I think we need to look at before we consider that. One is that 60-day shot clock that Roman was referring to, we're fine. So that, you know, that's something, again, you know, if those applications were submitted first or second week of July, you've gotten to, until the latest, early September. The second thing, and I, without looking at any of the applicable law on this, I'm hesitant, I'm, I'm not going to render an opinion, but need to make sure what rule applies, whether it's the ru, whether it's the rules that existed, the laws that existed as of the date of application, or the date the vote is taken. So, I mean, and...
We can deny an application, right? I mean, for whatever reason.
You can deny an application, and it, it, there has, it has to be, it can't be an arbitrary and capricious decision.
Oh, sweet.
It has to be for cause, and it's, it has to be based on the parameters set forth in existing, existing city code and, and state law.
They've already put out their application?
We have at least four more that have already filled out and submitted applications, yes.
What about stopping future applications? Do we have the discussion?
You could...
Might have to take a look at that.
We could take a look at, we could take a look at that, but that's something that we could...
I mean, would it be, and this is, I mean, you know, this is real stuff here, and would it be arbitrary and capricious to deny them based on something that we think is the vision for the Murf, for the city of Murfreesboro, based on, we're going to have this discussion, that doesn't seem, because, I mean, otherwise, anything that we say no, any reason we give, other than something that's in our ordinance, would be arbitrary and capricious, right? I mean, so, which may mean we really need to talk about what are...
The, there is a limit, the, the city has limited ability to regulate liquor stores within its, its, within the city limits. One of them is loca, location, the other one is number, and then there is this certificate of compliance, which is basically, does, does the applicant have any criminal history or other disqualifying criteria where that you, you don't meet the requirements for this compliance? The rest of the whole licensing issue is decided by the state. I think, I, I, I need to, I need to look at what would be, what would constitute a non-arbitrary and capricious decision that went beyond those three basic parameters where we have, the city has jurisdiction, distance, number, and the criteria set forth for issuing a certificate of compliance.
Part of the issue, too, is would the number you have in the hopper, if they get through, I think that's probably the concern about being able to address some of those things, but as we continue to grow, there will still be the opportunity to address those things with future applications, even if you don't address what's in the hopper. So I think we can still talk about it, but, I mean, just my two cents.
Yes, because we've got another census coming, and that number will be updated with the new census. So there is potential that that nine would...
How did the nine happen?
It's based on our, the moratorium was in place three years ago, I believe.
Yeah, 2018.
And it ended July 1 this year. Before that time, the city had in our ordinance a X number of retail liquor stores per census population. The nine is what's remaining of that X number, based on the retail liquor stores that currently are in place, and the total that we can have.
So we did, we did one per 5,000 residents, which ultimately is, what, 27 stores, 28 stores?
Roughly somewhere in there.
Yeah, and I, you know, the part of why this is good discussion, because I remember, I was thinking when we did that, the 5,000, and we added that in, or we changed it or whatever, I think you were here, too, and Ireland, can't remember if you were here yet, but, you know, when we did that, then all of a sudden, like, I don't know, sometime right around that, but it was like after that, I think probably all of us individually got called into meetings with a, a group of people who own liquor stores, to tell us that they, you know, it was kind of ob, ob, different than what I expected, you know, they wanted us to limit it even more, or there was some, something strange about it, I just can't...
They wanted us to limit the number, so the competition was fair.
Yeah, there was that, and then some, you know, so it was kind of strange how it all, there's multiple, there's many facets to this.
I mean, maybe, you know, maybe the discussion just needs to be, Adam, that you bring us back an ordinance for discussion, that if we've got 20, based on our census right now, that we've got 150, just say 150,000 residents, and we're saying five, that we've got, there's 30 that are booked, that if the council just says, look, that's the amount, that's all we want, you know, based on how our infrastructure is set up, we know that we're not really growing outward much anymore, so it's not really technically a location area, it's more just, you know, this one's a mile away, this one's two miles away. Maybe we just say, based on the current ordinance that we had that allowed 27 stores, we're not, you know, we, we're going to have the discussion whether we want any more stores than what we currently permitted back in 2018. And then if the council wants to go through and change that, then we can change that at, at some other time, but, you know, instead of going through the discussion of distance requirements and those things, maybe we just say now, this is how many we're okay with, and we want an ordinance that mimics what we had in 2018, and then we can discuss, discuss that. If the, if the concern is we're going to have a rush of, you know, nine people coming in, that we can, we can figure from there.
Well, another, you know, another one of the facets to this thing is, by us having that one in 5,000 deal, we have made a semi-finite number, and if we make it a really finite number, like I remember, y'all were telling us, there was this, somewhere in a city north of us, somewhere, you know, they had where it was only, could be five. Awesome, those permits were like becoming commodities, and they're selling them for a million dollars or something, you know, so that, just so you could have a liquor store, because the only, the five people that had them
Yeah.
Had the whole market, you know, I mean, so we got to be careful about creating monopolies, I mean, you know.
I'm just saying that maybe the, maybe the number is that we discuss, do we want to go from one per 5,000, that, you know, if the, if we expect our census to go up 20,000 people, then we say, okay, that number's one in 7,000 now, you know, so it, it sort of mimics the growth of the city that it...
Yeah.
As opposed to, you know, if, if we grow 20, then we're allowing 20,000, then we're allowing four more stores, or four more permits that could be available.
Right.
I see, that's a lot.
What the state, the state law says, you can lick it, limit the number of liquor stores so long as that number does not unreasonably restrict access to, to purchase alcohol. So Craig, I think, if I recall correctly, I believe Craig was city attorney, I was assistant city attorney at the time when we drafted the current ordinance, and I think we got, we picked 5,000 because it covered the number of permits that were there already, and maybe one or two additional ones. And so, so what, you know, I don't think going from five to seven, or maybe even a slightly higher number, it rises to a level of unreasonably restricts.
Yeah.
So I, there is, there is some room where you could work with that.
I, if, maybe it's something y'all give back, y'all come back to, sort of like what we're doing with this MED thing, as opposed to having a workshop discussion, and then having to wait 30 or 45 days for something, maybe come back with a resolution or an ordinance, and then we can discuss that as you bring it back.
I think, don't, are we, we're not meeting next week, right?
29th would be our...
I'm just saying by August.
Oh, well, I, well, I'm going to say, I'm going to say that, and I won't be here on, when the council meets on the 29th, but Roman, I think, I think we could have something to present for you to consider and say, this is something that you want. Does it not, in terms of drafting an ordinance, it's not a heavy lift?
You know, the other part, too, is, I mean, this, get into this later, later date when we discuss about it, or discuss it, but, you know, from talking to my friends who run these stores, the day of almost having your mom and pop 1,200 square foot liquor stores doesn't happen much anymore.
Right, that's kind of where I was getting ready to go.
They're all larger, just to be able to make it work now, so, you know.
Can I ask this, too? Are we limited from the state, the number of liquor stores we can have here, or no?
No.
So we can have 100 if we want?
You could, you could go total free market, you know, as long as they could get a license from the state and a certificate of compliance from the city.
So we said at one point, we think the appropriate amount is one per 5,000, is what we do.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious, from my perspective, if we had, we have 27, we think that may be enough, or a big number, but what if we had 50 or 75? What does that really mean? Does that mean...
23 are going out of business.
So does that mean more people are drinking? Does that mean people are traveling less to the liquor store? Does that mean each liquor store is making less money? I don't know what any of that means.
Yeah.
So, see if I got an idea about what that means? I'm curious.
I don't know. Yeah, I think that's a discussion. I mean, you know, it's like...
Not talk about now, I just...
It's like the laws that were passed, and, I mean, just, you're not selling beer at 12 o'clock. Does that mean that
Right.
People are not drinking beer on Sunday because you're not selling beer till 12 o'clock? I mean, so, go to a Titans game, you know? Let's just have it for a discussion in August. That'd be easier, as opposed.
You can drink at 10 on Sunday, but not...
Next city council meeting at the liquor store.
Yeah, yeah.
You can go and order a cocktail at 10 o'clock, but you can't do it.
Beer.
Yeah, I don't understand some of that stuff.
Hey, I want to, does he, council have any other business? I just want to publicly say one thing. I never thought that I would be going to a public meeting at 6 o'clock on a Friday night, but there we were, 6 o'clock last Friday night, at the Central Tennessee Solid Waste Board, where Darren was there, where they were, they were considering the, the application for expansion for Republic, and I, I just want to publicly say, Donna Barrett, if you've not had the opportunity to watch that and see the resolution that she put together, and I think, Adam, you helped her some with that resolution, it was not arbitrary and capricious, it was very well thought out and very well put together on how that the board made that decision, and so, to the hard work that she put in, and Darren put in, and Joe Whitefield, Matt Nolan representing Rutherford County, it was a, it was a good start. So I just want to say thank y'all to your work that you put in, and the decision that the board, the board made.
And that, I will be, I just want to let council members know that I will be sending out later this week an email, updating you on some other things related to the landfill. Nothing, nothing, no huge developments, but just want to keep you apprised.
All right. Ms. Brown, congratulations on your first full meeting. I'll let Mayor Bragg know that you did a good job.